All right, well, welcome everybody. Let's 6:02, let's start this evening's meeting for the zoning board of Rutland. I'm Chris Senical, Chair, Bob Paulson, the Vice Chair, Paul Crane, the member, Attorney Jacob Morris, member, and Rick Sorette, the other member, is online with us tonight, okay? And Tamika Murphy is the Secretary that keeps everything working in order here. So first thing on the agenda this evening is a continuation of the application for special commercial permit for Six River Road, a lot of Six River Road. So, last time we had a couple of issues out there, and I believe, Jacob, you found some information about the deed specifically? You want to talk about that?
Yep, did pull the deeds, so I pulled the original deed to Mr. Bartek, who was here at the last meeting, and that was when he purchased his home. The deeds dated July 1st of 2010. And then we'll all remember that there was an issue after Mr. Bartek purchased the property, the Morton Building was on the property line, and the neighboring property owner essentially had a piece, had a portion of that building. So they did another deed, and Mr. Bartek sold back a portion of the land to... No, I'm sorry, Mr. Bartek purchased that portion of the... Sold to, I'm sorry.
Sold to.
And that was in 2012, March 12th of 2012, for $27,500. Important is that Mr. Bartek, in the last meeting, thought that maybe there was some type of restrictive covenant with regard to the use of that property, which had the Morton Building on it, there is not. Neither deed has any restrictions on it. Another important, in my opinion, issue with regard to the two transfers is that they're within, they're less than two years. So Mr. Bartek owned the property originally in July of 2010, and then transferred it back in March of 2012, so that was less than a two-year period of time. It's important because Mr. Bartek was, had the opinion and was making the argument that, well, at least while he owned it, the use was discontinued in the Morton Building, and it was abandoned, nothing was being done there, but that wasn't a full two-year period, so...
Yeah, which is in our bylaws, correct? That if it's abandoned for two years, then that use goes back to, they basically lose that grandfathering.
Zone.
Zone, the grandfathering clause.
So I'll just throw it out there, I don't know whether I can at this point, it's, I don't, in my opinion, there's not enough evidence of any discontinued use, period of time that would be required, and...
I'm glad you brought that up, because that's something I wanted to talk with the board. Rick, you know, what are, thank you for your opinion on that, because that was my next question. What, you know, there's been, we heard the, you know, the statements from the public that saying that it wasn't used, and, you know, we heard some statements from the owners that says it was used, and, you know...
I see no solid evidence that it was abandoned and use was discontinued for a full period of full two years.
And even more evidence to the contrary, with regard to Precision Fence being there and storing their stuff there, and, yeah, I think there's more evidence going the other way.
I agree, yeah. See that Town Planet, see that email today? It's the same thing. And, yeah, that was a great email, Town, so...
Yeah, so Rick, do you have any comment as far as the use, that two-year gap use, that, you know, has this property been abandoned in any way?
Yeah, I had, you know, had some really real questions about that, but, you know, David George, you know, did lay it out pretty nicely, and, you know, it's tough, it's a tough situation, because it's a residential zoning, but it looks, it really looks like there's been pretty much continuous use, you know, during the period that we're talking about, and it's definitely an eyesore now, and, you know, you want to foster new business, these people appear to be very solid. I understand that, you know, you don't want, you don't want to throw a business into a residential area, but this is kind of the exception to the rule. So I agree with Jake, Jake's legal analysis, and I really, really kind of have to go along with what David George has put in his email. So I don't, I'm kind of going along with what you guys are thinking.
Yeah, I think, you know, to the fact that the bylaw states two years, and Mr. Bartek, if he wanted to claim that, he can't, because he didn't own it for two years, in which time it was used prior to, and therefore, I see no evidence that it's been, you know, abandoned in any way, shape, or form, and just for the people here in the public and online, if there's anybody, Town Planet, Dave George gave us an email, kind of defining what abandoned in the state statute means, some case studies he applied to us, so I don't think they really need to get into all those cases or anything here tonight, blab about legal mumbo jumbo and past cases, but to the fact that, you know, and I believe, and I said in the last meeting, somebody storing their materials there is, they're still using the building, you know, just because you don't go in the thing every day doesn't mean it's an abandoned building. So, a lot of real estate developers have property they don't use, they're trying to rent or sell or whatever, it doesn't mean it's an abandoned property. So anyways, I think that issue's kind of a, you know, we're taking care of that, so to speak, putting an end to, you know, that discussion. There's no covenant, as you said, on the deed, so there's no restrictions on the deed for this not to be used commercial. I think at this point, you guys are all pretty much in favor that this is pretty much not an issue to continue to be used as a commercial property, and now it might just be a matter of setting up some parameters on how they do use it. Personally, in my opinion, you know, Dave put it, Dave put it in his email about, you know, order of conditions and things, and I had that in mind as well, and specifically, as much as I, you know, want to see this building continued as a commercial property, or just as its legal use, which can be a commercial property, I do think the nature of this being a residential area, that we shouldn't allow this property just to go on perpetuity of being a commercial property. So after this business, or after this ownership, whichever ends first, it almost like it has to come back to us for a site plan again, another permit. If someone was to change this building, you know, if they were to sell this property off to somebody commercially, and who knows if they were going to be here? You know, if Precision Fence was going to go back in there, or, you know, I don't know, an auto body was going to go in there or something, I think at that point in time, you know, there should be, we shouldn't just allow this property to continue on, just because of the nature of the zoning, and we could put that in the order of conditions. So I just wanted to talk about that. Any other items that you guys wanted to have and add to an order of conditions that we might set around this?
So they get a special permit, and then when they either sell it, the next person has to come back?
Sure, just like they're doing right now, you know? I don't know if you've purchased a property yet or not, but, you know, regardless, you know, before you, you know, one of the conditions of your purchase and sale would be to get your permits, and, you know, that's just good business, you know, Bob, you do plenty of commercial deals, and that would be something that the next person, whoever you sold it to, would have to, you know, if you want to leave something in there, that if they sold this business and it was going to continue as this Packard, you know, old car restoration business, I'd be okay with leaving it at what that is, because I think this type of business is not intrusive to the neighborhood. I don't feel it's going to be, in any way, shape, or form, hurt the, honestly, I think it's going to help it, because you're going to clean the building up and they're going to improve the property. So I do think it's a betterment to the neighborhood, personally. That's my opinion, we know maybe some other people have different ones, but, I don't know, that's just my opinion. I could let this business go on in perpetuity, but I would be cautious about just letting any business go into this building in a residential neighborhood after these people use this property, or they sell the business, whatever happens. So, just some thoughts on that, and one to how we want to frame that up and structure this order of conditions. Any other concerns that you want to add to it? Yeah, Rick?
Yeah, I know, I think that makes sense, I mean, this is still going to be a residential zoning, this is a special permit for this business only, we can make sure we put conditions in there that indicate that this, the business will be operated as it's been represented to, well, by the applicants.
Yeah.
And I think the best way to do that is, I mean, my method is just to do a draft. I think either Jake or I should write the decision, Chris, unless you think somebody else here...
I'm in favor of that. Do I have a motion?
So why don't, I mean, my suggestion is Jake's already done some research, so I don't want to volunteer Jake, but, but, I mean, Jake, if you're crazy the next week or so, I'll do it, but, but if you want to take a stab at it and then run it by the board, give us time to comment, and we'll just do it as a draft, I think that would make sense, because somebody might have some better, you know, some other ideas about conditions. But, to me, I like to put it down on paper and then modify it from there, but that, but, Chris, it's your ballgame, you know?
Yeah, no, I would like to try to get all the conditions now in this public forum. I don't know that we can do that outside this public forum. I don't think we're going to be able to add conditions to this order of conditions. I think we need to determine those right now. The wording, we could maybe, you know, frame up a little bit, you know?
Okay. And I obviously don't mind doing it, but I know that Tamika has been doing an excellent job, obviously, that's...
Yeah, and if we get these, if we get these done right now, I don't think you should have a problem, I don't mind, I mean, I...
Well, Chris, this is, this is a pretty, this is not a basic one that Tamika could draft, I think, I think one of the attorneys should do it.
I don't mind, I don't mind.
I mean, Jake, I'll volunteer.
No, 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 I'll do it, I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, oh, okay, but Chris, Chris, I think you're right, I think, I think we should frame out the conditions tonight, yeah, I agree with that.
I would like to do that, I mean, I think, you know, I think some hours of operation, you know, I don't want to see a tractor trail, you know, pull up with a couple of packages in the thing from the Mika March, you know, at 2:00 in the morning, and be sitting there idling all night, you know what I mean, for those people, I don't think that's appropriate. I hope you can understand that, you know, you never know, you never know, trust me. I've seen it all, right?
The only thing I'm going to say with the conditions on this, putting a condition in that, you know, if they sell the property, the business, the new...
Guys, yeah, we can't, unfortunately, we cannot close that door, be in an open meeting, excuse me, Paul, that is the, that's the rule.
Are you sure?
Well, I got my backside chewed off on the sink, which one, because we closed the door, and there were three people out in the hallway, and boy, they lit me up.
Put a sign on the door that says, "Open meeting, come on in."
Listen, I can't believe, I argued that, man, if I had, if a guy can walk out of his house, get in his car, get out of his car, walk in the lobby doors, but not open that door, I'm not sure we needed them in the meeting, to be honest with you. They can't make it that far. Anyway, Bob, go ahead.
One of the concerns I have with the wording of the condition of the special permit is that, I think it's going to be that, you know, if they decide to sell their business, and, I mean, they're paying whatever they're paying for this property here, it could substantially decrease the value of the property to a, and somebody who looks, come into the business, and could put extra costs and press on them when they go to sell, that, I mean, I would like to see that, say, you know, that a business of kind, as long as there were no substantial changes to the business, special permit would still apply, meaning if somebody wants to come in all of a sudden and say, "Oh, it's being used commercial, let's put it in a supermarket," no. Another shop comes in of the same type of business, I think there's, you know...
I'm very cautious, and I'm not really, I'm very hesitant, and I don't want to go along with ambiguity in any way. With all due respect to the applicant, I want to be specific, for the sake of the people in that neighborhood, you know, like kind, auto body, you know, car repair shop, whole different nature there, what you're going to see there. You know, I just think, you know, I understand what you're saying, I'm certainly sensitive as a commercial property owner, I'm certainly sensitive of my values, future values of property, and don't, not trying to handcuff you and devalue your property, or limit people that may want to buy that property, but I just think you kind of understand what you're getting into here, up at the front of this, and I just think that, you know, it's a sticky situation, I just want to be fair for the community as well as these people.
Can we ask them about it now, or do we have to, can we ask them if they care about the conditions, or do we have to open it up to...
We, they don't have to agree to our conditions?
No, I know, I'm just wondering whether, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, if they want, if they want to comment, yeah, certainly, yeah.
What are your thoughts on the value of the property, you know, when you go to sell it 10 months, 10 years from now, and potential buyers are going to see that, you know, they're going to have to come to the board to get a special permit to run their business?
The goal would be that one of our children wants to take it over, and it just stays the same business it is, in a perfect world, but...
Because I think we're headed that way, it seems...
I can tell you this right now, any change of, if you buy a piece of property in Worcester, okay, there's, when you look at the matrix of the property in Worcester on a commercial property, there's all different sorts of uses.
Yes.
But every condition, every purchase and sales, is always, you're going to get your own permits.
Yep.
You know, if I'm, even if I'm renting a property out here, listen, those permits to operate your business here is your responsibility.
Yeah.
And any business that's looking to come into any commercial property, it's really standard operating procedure, to make sure you have your permits, or else, listen, a lot of people don't do that. A lot of people just get it, they go in there, they change the use, and they move along, and if no neighbor or anybody, you know, complains, or anybody sees anything otherwise, it just goes along, and it's going on all in place. I know a lot of guys that do that, no problem, but you, you know, enter at your own risk, you know, at that point.
I think because of the area that the building is located in, with the low volume of traffic flow and high visibility that a normal business would require on a main street, if we were ever to sell it, we would be very, as our, as owners, we'd be limited as to buyers who would be interested in it, because of the location, it does not appeal to somebody that's looking for a high-visibility business, which we are not.
Large turnaround.
Which Keith is not, so, you know what I mean? So I think, there's already that limitation, unless the other side of the town line, Hubbardston, decides to instantly blow up into a big commercial.
Blowing a truck was...
But I don't see, I mean, we recognize that that area is not an up-and-coming hotbed of industry, so, but that's what our business...
It just fits your...
Right, it fits our criteria, we want to...
All right, I was just curious.
Yeah, that's...
No, it's a good point, you think.
But if there could be a condition in there, if the business stays the same, but it's just switching...
I would be amenable to that, if, you know, if the repair shop for these Packards stays on, you want to pass it down to a family member or something like that, or even if they were to sell to another person, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
That's kind of where I was...
I don't have a problem with it staying as that, that business itself, this, whatever your business name is, for me, excuse me.
Parkers Packards.
Parkers Packards, thank you. So Parkers Packards can stay there as long as it can survive. And I'm fine with that language.
That's what I'm saying, substantial change in there.
But once you get outside that, I just feel that we should...
That's what I'm saying, a substantial change in the business.
And you know, every neighborhood evolves. The two businesses, yes.
The pump one.
The fuel pump repair, yep.
So whilst you get into like stormwater, and...
Well, yeah, that's another thing, Bob, I got a whole list of things to go over the site plan next, all right? Because the site plan, it's very weak, to be honest with you, and I've got this whole page right here of comments that I want to go over.
So lighting and all that?
Yeah, we got to, yeah, I got a whole bunch of stuff, but at least let's just get these order of conditions kind of tied out as far as the business goes, and then...
All right, so language on restricted...
Hours of, hours of operation, really, those are the two concerns for me, hours of operation and the use in perpetuity, and just, you know, those are the two things. I don't know if you guys have any other, you know, concerns, Rick, if you have anything else, speak up.
Well, my, Chris, my thought is, you know, the application, the let, kind of the statement, the written, typewritten statement that was included, you know, you could attach that and just say, you know, the special permit is only for the business as laid out, you know, in the application, and that way, you know, even 10 years from now, you could pull out our decision, and you could refer to the application, and just go, and you could see, because they're very detailed. Now, I mean, the only...
So the use that's stating in the application. All right, excellent, yeah, that's a great, great way to, great way to write that, yeah. Okay, does that make sense, Jake?
Yeah.
Yep?
One thing, maybe...
Because there's a list of two businesses in it.
You say it again, huh?
Yeah, so I've just basically referenced that...
I was writing something.
That the use, one of the order of conditions would be that the use is referred to, you know, as referred to in the application for Parker's Packards and...
Arctic Gold Rebuilders.
Yep, those two names, you know, can continue on, you know, through future family members or sales of the business to others, but any, you know, any other change of ownership as far as the use of that, that business would have to come under a site plan, any other business outside that. You're good.
The one thing I was going to say, just when you are writing this, in the business, Parker's Packards, maybe, just say, you know, the restoration, mechanical restoration, so it doesn't turn into, they said they don't do any bodywork.
No.
Mechanical restoration of antique cars, I mean, they...
It's a good point.
They expand the Cadillacs at some point, somebody could throw a wrench at you, you know, but not to go in, you know, mechanical restoration, that's what you do.
Right, yeah.
You know, of antique cars.
Yeah, no bodywork, because that's, that's a big one. The bodywork is really the...
The bodywork adds a whole different...
It is, that's a whole different dimension, and that's a whole different, that gets pretty chemical invasive, and...
You don't want to be anchored into just Packards.
Yeah, so for ours, whatever we do.
We have had a couple.
I don't even see anything in there, really, that, I guess, the letter of the business.
What's in there in the other business?
Arthur Gold Rebuilders.
It's in here somewhere.
Yeah.
In the application in the back. Arthur Gold Rebuilders, right there.
Stage 19.
See that right there?
Thank you.
Fuel pumps and...
Water pumps.
Water pumps.
Primarily male water.
So those uses would be allowed, that those two businesses basically are allowed.
I just put in the...
Or you change the zoning down in the future, and then you can do what you want.
I put in the...
That's the other, just, just as a point of note, if you were to get that zoning changed back to, you know, a business zoning, through the, through, through Dave George, you know, work with him in the future to, then, you don't have to come back, you know what you want. So that might be another avenue for you.
Just preface that with...
Strategy, put your business on the road.
Water and fuel pumps, that just makes it to, you can get in some pretty big water pumps.
Yeah, I don't think they've got...
They're not going to, just to be specific, but, you know, somebody else down the line comes and says, "Oh, it says I can do water pump business here," or they bring in a tractor trailer or something, you know, automotive, you know, automotive water and fuel pump.
Hours of operations, why don't you, if you would, kind of help us decide, you know, kind of give us an idea of what your hours of operation would be?
So what we, what we advertise is eight to five.
Eight to five.
Naturally, being a business owner, I tend to want, work a little bit longer, but, generally speaking, the employees and, and normal operating business hours, which when people are allowed to come in and out of the building, which is our employees, is eight to five.
Okay.
I'm usually there until six, wrapping up, like anybody would at the end of the day, doing final paperwork and closing up the shop, but work is conducted during those hours, eight to five.
Okay, and is that five, six days a week?
Five, Monday through Friday.
All right, is there any weekend activity that's...
Not often. No, occasionally, we have the New England Region Packard Club, once a year, come out to the shop for a show and tell, you know, Cars and Coffee type of thing, you know, for the, for the club members, but, or we've had, we've had some other, like I said, Cars and Coffee, Open House type thing, customer appreciation type of thing, you know, once, once a year type of thing, but generally speaking, weekends are pretty quiet.
Yeah, it would just be you if anybody...
Yeah, I mean, I'm almost amenable to like an eight to eight kind of timeframe, you know, just to give some flexibility and latitude there.
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday, yeah, and...
Saturday, eight to...
Eight to two or something, yeah, eight to five, yeah, you know? To give you some use, to do some show or something like that, an event like that, and then try to, let's keep it cool on Sundays, if you don't mind, you know?
Our ultimate goal is to hopefully indicate that you all know that we're there, so...
Do, do we have to confine the work to the inside, you know, that no work is on the outside of the property?
I think that's what, really...
I know that's what you said.
We also don't want it, if he's just sitting there end of month doing your taxes one night, someone knocking on the door at 10:00 at night...
Get arrested at 10:00 at night, because he's doing his taxes.
Someone saying, you know, but I mean, yeah, so I'd be specific about, you know, repair business and...
Yeah, just, just...
Office work.
Just mechanical work, eight to eight, you know?
Yeah.
Mechanical rest, you know, mechanical restoration work is from eight to eight. Other than that, you can enter your property whenever you want, so, you know, we're not going to, you know, shoot down, walk in, bury your papers, you know?
So mechanic, you know, mechanical work being done only between these hours.
So am I modifying, right now I just have hours of operation, Monday through Friday, eight to eight, Saturday, eight to five, what else am I...
I wouldn't say...
For mechanical work, those are the hours of operation for mechanical restoration work.
Yeah.
And is it okay if we put it on the inside of the building, nothing on the exterior of the building?
As far as...
As far as where you're doing the work?
Oh, everything's done inside. I mean, the only time the car is outside is if we're taking it out to get fuel or a test drive, so...
What do you guys think about that? Is that too restrictive?
Work, all work to be, be conducted, all mechanical work to be conducted on the inside, interior of the building.
Yeah, there's nothing that's...
Nothing happens, nothing happens outside. I can't even, I can't, as I said last meeting, I can't even leave the cars outside, so...
And again, if things happen, they're going to shoot you down.
Well, yeah, right, right, I mean, naturally...
I'm not going to kick you out because you worked outside five minutes, when the car stalled outside, you know? He opened his hood, you know? I think within reason here, we just don't want to see the car pile up outside.
Things are, we're looking towards the future too, if this happens.
Sure, sure, no, I get it.
Things go on, you know...
Those drawings aren't worth the while, those Packards, you keep those outside.
You move the business on, business goes in a different direction, you're still within these restrictions.
Yep, no, I get it.
And deliveries, I would probably prefer to keep those like eight to five.
Monday through Friday.
Monday to Friday deliveries.
Well, again, deliveries are going to be whatever the hours...
Like a FedEx truck.
The postal service, yes, and FedEx are...
Those guys are out there on Sundays, they're worse than anybody.
I know.
Yeah, but they don't deliver commercially on weekends.
Yeah, that's true.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't have that for us on the weekends.
It's tough to control those guys anyways, they're going to show up when they show up, I mean, if you're, you know, if you're there. Anything else, any other concerns? Any other orders of condition? Then we'll just get into the actual site, and we might add a few other things, Jacob, just if the site's related, as far as like a lighting, or, you know, something like that, or, you know, those kind of things. Rick, you good with that? And then we'll just kind of dig into the actual site plan review right now?
Absolutely, Chris, the conditions sound good.
So just to kind of transition here, folks, getting into the actual site plan review here, some of the things, I just went through this plan, one of the, one of the tricky things here is the septic system is in Hubbardston.
Yes.
So I just think, maybe one of the orders of condition is that they've got to go to Hubbardston to get the septic system approved, and, I mean, they're going to meet the Board of Health there, it's really out of our jurisdiction, but I just think, A, you got to meet that town requirements for that, and then, you're good to go. So with that being said, that's the only thing I would want in it, because it's, because our Board of Health isn't going to be reviewing it, so...
Yes.
That was another condition?
As a condition, yeah, just that they have to get approval, they have to get an approved, inspected...
Is it Board, is Board of Health in that, do they do that in Hubbardston?
Yeah, Board of Health in Hubbardston, yep, so just to, for the applicant...
Must get septic.
Must get an approved septic system inspected and approved by the Board of Health of Hubbardston. If they don't do that, then they're breaking one of the orders of conditions, so, all So one, one big, kind of, it's not a really big deal, but it's something I'm just a stickler about, but stamped drawing, it's not stamped by a civil engineer, all right? This is stamped by a land surveyor, okay? So if you look at a stamp, right, and there's a difference. So Bruce Wilson is a professional land surveyor, he's not a civil engineer, so I'd really prefer to have this stamped by a civil engineer. Now, you know, when you're developing a piece of property, and you hire a civil engineer, he will hire a land surveyor, he will go out, he will survey that property, he will, he will go to the deeds, get the property, you know, get a map of it, and then he draws he will, he will go to the deeds, get the property, you know, get a map of it, and then he draws up this frame drawing of the property, if there's a house on, he puts that on it, then he gives it back to the civil engineer to lay out the building, if it's new construction or lay out the whole parking lot and everything like that, and then he does all those calculations. So this has not been stamped by a civil engineer, it's only been stamped by that land surveyor, so just let you get that corrected and, and re-submitted with that.
Yeah.
Um... The paved area, I, I got a little bit of a concern, um, so let's talk about the paved area. You're only gonna pave the area in front of the two doors, but you're not gonna pave the rest of the side there on the hill? Is that correct, the way I see this plan?
Yeah, there's three doors, there's three garage doors, if the budget allows it, great, but the way interest rates are going right now and how low...
All is well.
Yeah. It's, every, it just keeps eating away.
Okay.
But ideally, I'd like to pave in front.
The entire thing.
The width of the building, but the very least, we have to do it in front of the door, so we get the cars in and out.
Yeah.
Alright, so just, you got an impervious area there, and I would go back to the civil engineer and just like to see how he's managing that stormwater.
Yeah, we had talked about that.
And that needs to get, you can't just dump that all down the street, because, again, that grade is up here, it is, is a pretty good elevation, and it's a short distance.
Yep.
So, um, I would show, if, if you have plans to pave this, I would show it all paved, just so that it's on the plan.
Gotcha.
Alright, and you can do it. Um, if you're not gonna pave it, um, you know, just, just stone there will suffice, okay? But just make sure he designs, um, the flow, whatever drainage he, he puts in there, and usually, it's just gonna be just a swell, just a little hump on the side there, you know, if you've got... Just makes the grade a little steeper, but you just gotta figure that out, or some type of drain or something, trench drain or something, or a small manhole there and just discharge it back further down the line. So, I, I mean, Julian knows what he's doing, so, um, just, uh, you know, have him work that up, alright? The handicap access, um, so you've gotta paved, um, I'm sorry, you got a concrete new walkway in front of that portion of your building where your offices are, and that'll look nice, that's good. Uh, will that concrete walkway extend out where the dash lines are between the two handicap spaces? Let me get this bigger drawing here.
Yeah, sorry.
Because I think we're gonna need, I think, when the handicap, and you know, listen, I mean, it's, it's the law, okay, I mean?
Yep.
We all know how often a handicap person is gonna use that, but, you know, they're gonna need, I, I don't know that they should be on a gravel parking lot, you know, on a wheelchair.
It's not a requirement to have...
It's not?
It is not, I've looked into all of this, you know, it's not, because if you look at some of the other... Yeah, and quite honestly, it's not a requirement to have the two handicap spaces, but he showed them in there, I'm not sure why.
You gotta have at least one, though.
Correct.
Yeah.
So the intention was to have it, um, obviously down to grade between those two spaces, so that it would be able to go up a ramp to the door.
Okay, so that slope, that, that concrete slope, slope right out?
Based on that, based on where the door is, and then based on this, we probably would have to bring the concrete a little bit lower to actually meet that ramp slope.
Yeah, so if you could just show that slope and have them put that on there, to get that on there, that'd be good. Um, and this, I'm fine with the signs on the building that you got here, you're just gonna put the sign up on the building?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, that, that's fine, we don't need, uh, um, he's got a detail here of, of, you know, painting, but...
I know, I don't know, I guess...
It's just a, it's a cat drop, it's alright.
Uh, yep.
But you can take that off, because it's just misleading when you put something on there.
Yes.
You know, and honestly, if the inspector, if it's on there and the inspector sees it, you're on the hook for it, so...
Yeah.
Um, just keep it tight, um... The fence, um, so I got here, is there any detail on the fence on that right side of the lot, i- is there an existing fence there now?
There is not.
There is not, but this is what we had talked about.
Okay.
Putting up on the side, so there'd be privacy for the bar techs, and hopefully...
Okay. Um, is that, is that Mr. Bar, Mr. Bar tech, did he ever respond to anything like that? Okay. Alright.
Which, where are you talking about, Chris, which?
Um, down, just right over here. Between, between Bar tech's property?
Oh, this, okay.
So, I mean, I never, did, you know, what did I...
A vinyl.
Vinyl.
A vinyl, vinyl, wait, vinyl.
Okay, nice, yep, good.
Um, and I just wanna ask this question to the board members, did, did anybody ever really hear what he was upset about? Like, I know he kept talking about the hangup that it couldn't be used, but did he ever actually say why he didn't want a business next to him or anything like that?
Residential, I don't want it.
Just residential, he just didn't want, he didn't, he never gave anything specific, like, you know?
Yeah, right.
I mean, I certainly tried to, if he had a concern, I wish he was here tonight, because this would be the night for his chances, to try to get it mitigated a little bit, and hopefully we could work in the middle of things, and he could be a little happier, um, but, you know, still to that fact, we'll try to, um, um, you know, the fence is there, so that's good. Um, at least that'll keep him, uh, okay, alright, so that's good. Um, if he could just show a detail of that fence like that, you know, that six or, was that eight foot fence or something like that?
Six foot tall.
Six foot tall, so just show that on there, and, you know, again, what we're trying to do is give a plan with all the detail and, and drawings, so that when you build this, the building inspectors, there's no questions, and really, everybody, you don't want any, any problems. This is the plan, this is the specific fence that's been approved on my site plan, you got no issues. I'm not trying to be a stickler, I just don't wanna be back in here with everybody in a, in a Donnybrook.
Fair enough.
You know, we're just trying to get all the details squared away.
So, Chris, just if I could for one second?
Yep.
If the board would like, the board could condition the type of fence by what's shown there, as the fence being constructed to be substantially in accordance with the sample shown. If you'd like to mark it up as an exhibit, that could be a condition, if you'd like.
Yep.
I'm guessing you're, uh, I'm guessing you're gonna be doing the fence?
I think so.
It mentions about, uh, uh, the plan mentions some landscaping, and I know you show a little bit, um, I just think we could be a little more specific with some of the landscaping, um...
There's not much space on the Rutland side of the line.
Yep.
There's maybe a foot or two, and then the rest of the landscaping is actually in Hubbardston.
So what are you doing on this side over here? I know you've got like a little, I'm assuming this is gonna be a paved parking area here, or maybe that's not at all?
It's all just gravel right now.
So this line that's shown edge of gravel is right here, what's between that and your fence?
I mean, we can do some landscaping there, sure.
I, I just, I'm just...
There's nothing there right now.
There's nothing there right now.
I mean, you can leave it gravel, you can, you know?
It's gravel right now, I don't know what the soil's like, but it's just gravel right now.
But you didn't have any intentions to do anything, dress that up or bring that up?
I think, I think with the white vinyl fence, it'll be clean looking, you know? But, but as far as curb appeal, we were talking along the other, uh, section there by the, down here.
Yeah, that's a much bigger problem.
So there's an existing chain link fence there, though?
Correct.
And that's gonna remain?
Correct.
Yeah.
How, how high was the height of that, six feet? That's a six foot?
Yeah.
No bob on the top?
No.
Okay. Great, alright, that's good, that's good.
You know, and when you, when you clean up that front, those beautiful Christmas trees out there, they're really nice.
So there's existing trees there right now?
Yes.
And is that what this, this, that's all these existing trees right there?
Correct.
Okay.
They're fairly established, like, 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 uh, like you said, like a Christmas type tree, like an evergreen.
Like a balsam.
Yeah, like a balsam, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay. This just says existing screening shrubs, um, and then, are there, are there new ones being planted, is that what the dark ones are? Is this gonna infill that?
We were planning to.
We had planned on infilling it to make it...
Just making a green wall?
Maybe like arborvitae or something, or just something to make it a little...
Just a, just a evergreen wall?
Yep.
Okay. You guys fine with that, just letting them kinda build that up, and I don't wanna get too technical with them, I'm not trying to drag them out, just wanna make sure we understand what's going in there, um, it's on the record, okay?
There's an existing stormwater drain there.
Oh, just so you know. Right, um, the storage containers in the back, what gets stored in the back there?
Comes off the, um...
Extra pumps, we've got thousands of fuel and water pumps.
Okay, okay.
So there is a stormwater system there?
Okay.
No, we just had massive inventory when we bought the business back in the twenty sixteen, so...
So that's just surplus goods ready to get shipped out?
Yep.
Now, these, uh, conex, these are steel conex boxes, basically, old, um...
What's that?
Yes, correct.
Just regular twenty foot storage.
Twenty foot, twenty foot storage.
Yeah, and where are you accessing, I mean, walking around the dumpster today?
The, the back of the building between the two conexes is a, is a man door.
There's a door there.
Yes.
What's the, uh, ground cover back there?
It's all gravel as well. It's all gravel around the entire building, essentially.
If he could just show that?
Yep.
I would like him just to clean this drawing up and then...
Yeah, I agree.
Um, and even like over here, where you show edge of gravel with nothing in between that fence, just show the whole thing gravel, I don't, just, just get everything covered, all the T's dotted, you know, all the I's crossed, and we'll be good. You know? Dot them across, and whatever, you're good. Just don't want, just don't want, you know, the tighter we get this...
Yep.
The, the fewer problems, sort of, right down the road, okay? Um...
Chris, what's that, number nine in the octagon?
That's the parking space.
Oh.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I thought you did that.
It is, it is a spot parking space, yeah, okay.
After this, by that.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Um, so let's talk, um, you showed just the three exterior lights on the building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there'll be nothing in the back, or there'll be nothing else in the front over the doors or anything like that, or nothing else? In this lot area or anything like that?
So they're just a ring camera, just a residential ring camera on the side that has a floodlight.
A floodlight.
And then on the front, again, residential down light fixtures.
Yeah, exactly, just get it, get the classy look.
Yeah.
Alright, so you're not trying to make family park out there? Okay. Um...
Do you want me to note the fixtures on the...
That would be great, yeah, yeah, that'd be fantastic, because then, uh, this is some record of what you're doing, again. No, uh, no issues there. Um, how about signage? Um, any, any building signs, any, uh, monument signs on the property, what's your plan for that?
Just on the front of the building, similar to the rendering, the porch is not in budget anymore, but, um, just to have a Parker's Packard sign and a square Arthur Gold Rebuilder sign on the front, but there won't be anything on the road, there won't be anything else.
It's primarily for, as we have it now in our current business, for the delivery guys to know where to go.
That's during the day, daylight?
Yeah.
Even if those lights are over and it lights it up a little bit at night, looks nice anyways?
Eh, they don't need them with it.
Don't need them with it. Alright. And it just wouldn't, they're not a backlit sign, obviously, correct?
No.
No.
They need to go, uh, get a sign permit?
They'll have to do that, that'll have to just be, just be careful, you're gonna have to just pull a permit for your signs.
Okay.
There's a whole little bylaw section with the building inspector, just, uh, you might have to go through the planning board, Dave, is that what you gotta do on the signs?
I'd have to take a look at the particular type of sign, it really varies by sign type, we'd have to look at the sign by law, I mean, fall is a separate conversation.
So, yeah, you could reach out with Dave there, he'll help walk you through that process, guys.
Perfect. If I remember, we, we had the signs for what, a whole month? Uh, it was, uh, a sign on the building was pretty straightforward, especially if it wasn't lit.
Exactly, yeah, they're not backlit signs, I don't think they're a lot of, much of an issue.
The sign companies help them with that, too.
The sign company that made our current sign is just a vinyl wrap on a piece of...
Piece of wood.
Tin or something, you know?
Yeah, it's not even anything.
That's it. Yes, like this.
Alright, yeah, but that, that'll go, should go right through.
Okay.
You're not lighting it, it's not a monument sign, it's not out on the edge of the road or anything.
No, I got you.
And you don't show any monument signs, you're not having any, correct?
No.
Oh, oh, you're like, just like a, 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 a ground update, you're not gonna...
No, no, no.
Pedestal sign up by the road or anything?
No.
Okay, no need. Um...
Uh, alright, so I, I have the fencing and gate to be removed for access here, so... The, uh, so you're gonna pull out the fencing there, so there's no, um, it's not a secured lot any longer.
It's not really anyway, there's no, the, where the fencing ends in Hubbardston, you can get in over there. There's an opening.
Oh, at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, it just kinda terminates.
Yep.
The reason for that was that the potent trout can't, they would throw in everything in my dumpster. No offense, they pull right out and load it up. We're keeping the dri, we were keeping the walking travis just to drive from traffic.
Gotcha, okay. Alright, um... Any curbing around the asphalt or anything like that, or you're just gonna pave it, gravel to it?
Yep.
Yeah, that's it, no curving? Okay, just have them note that, no curving?
Yep.
Alright. Um... What issue, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, uh, opening into the lot, is it, how big is this opening, is it all wide open here, or is it like just a curb cut? It's coming, it's coming in off a river road.
Yep, it's completely open.
It's completely open here.
Yes, yes, as wide as the building, yeah.
As wide as the building.
Yeah, and it's all gravel right now.
Gravel right down to the, uh, the asphalt and road.
Yep, okay.
Um, I just want the board's opinion on this one, so, I believe this, this lot, this dash line on this plan is the side setback. Okay? Now, they don't have the required side setback, there's probably... I just wanna get this, you know, let's, let's just talk about it.
If I could, sorry to interrupt, but I don't believe it's an issue, but it's a knock and forming structure, it's greater than ten years, and it can't be something concerning enforcement.
Per that other clause we read last week.
The other clause you read last time.
He pulled a permit for it, too, he went through the ZBA when he built the building originally.
He had a variance for it?
He did get a variance for it.
Do you have any copy of that?
Uh, you guys have one in the planning office, but let me see.
It takes care of it, though.
I haven't seen that, but either way, I think it's coming.
I think you gotta, yeah, put it double bound, or it's dead for sure now.
Give me one second.
It's good, it's already existing variance, it's perfect. And that attached to the...
No.
Right there, variance on the side setback, required fifty feet to twenty feet.
Can you get us a copy of this, please?
Yep.
And send it to Tamika?
Yep.
And just, let's make this part of our file, just so we have this, anybody wants to see that, but, right there, the second item, now. And with the clause that Dave mentioned that we talked about last week, too.
I know, we did it.
Alright, what year was that?
Uh, December eighteenth, two thousand and seven.
Are you one of you two? Alright. I can assure you, I don't have a copy of that. I can assure you. Alright. Beautiful. Alright, so that issue, that's, that's, um, alright, that's all I got regarding the site plan. Um, I think if you can, um, just clean that up, and, um, you know, get you back in there, look at these, look at these foot in the next meeting, and, uh, get this, um, wrapped up, I think, any, does anybody have anything else, and then maybe we can have the, a draft of the, of the conditions?
Yep.
And then we could just fine tune all that stuff, and probably be ready to make a vote on that, what do you guys think?
Yeah, so, um, all I think we need from them is really an updated, uh...
Updated plan with the red stamp on it, and all, all those little things we talked about. Um...
Can I send it, can we look at it before the next meeting and tune it up, or we have to tune it up in the next meeting?
We can look at it, we can, we can circulate, right?
You can, we can circulate it, and you can look at it, and you guys can make notes for yourselves to talk about the next time, we just, just can't discuss it immediately.
Okay. Boy, boy.
Also, if I could, just offer, if the comments were made only to the author, and there was no deliberation, that would be fair, so that the author could take the comments in So that the author could take the comments in and consider those and put those together. And then you could discuss how it came to be in the open meeting, that this comment came from so-and-so, and then
Yeah, so don't hit reply at all.
Don't hit reply, yes.
Thank you, Dave, that's very helpful. Keeps things moving along and try to, I mean, I hate to have you come back, but I just, you know?
Yeah.
Just wanna have that planned, see, it's the best thing for all of us.
Nope, I agree.
Mostly you, you folks, so that nothing can stop you and slow you down once you get to green light here. And, you know, everything's set in stone, so everybody's had their chance here to say otherwise. At this time, just thought I'd open this meeting up to the public, or anybody else that wants to say anything?
I think this should happen down there.
Alright.
I do too.
He's had it a mess long enough.
Is there anybody online, or?
No, just Rick.
Rick, you got anything else?
No, I'm, I'm all set, Chris, thank you.
Alright, so Tamika, let's talk about, just continuing on this, and how much time we have, what, what our window is, and when the next available timeframe might be.
Well, um, it's kind of next Wednesday, we're already scheduled. So I don't know how long it's going to be.
I was gonna say, that's the, that's the unknown at the moment, is how well we can push that along.
This is gonna be pretty quick.
We have the other meeting on the fifteenth.
Blue sky, I mean, we
We could put him in first on the, on the agenda for, for the fifteenth.
Yeah, because we've been nodding for ten minutes.
If everything's lined up.
Yeah, everything's It gives you three weeks, right, the fifteenth from now? It's about three weeks.
That's plenty, should be more than enough time, yeah.
Maybe four. But that should give me enough time to get it all wrapped up. I don't wanna drag it out too long, but is that alright?
What time's on the fifteenth? I don't know, graduates.
Um, it'll be six o'clock, six thirty, maybe?
We can't do it.
We can't do it. The first, I'm, I'm rounding the eighth, we could do the eighth.
Want to do the eighth?
I, I can do the eighth, but I think somebody had a problem with the eighth.
Yeah, I had an issue with the eighth, Chris. I mean, I mean, Chris, Chris, in theory, there's four of you, you, you all four could do it on the eighth, and you, you could vote on it. If you had four affirmative votes, you wouldn't need my vote.
You all gotta make it, though, you all good for that?
Right.
June eighth?
June eighth?
Yeah.
Is it definite? Go ahead, woman, alright, you can be there. Alright, let's do June eighth, and that's three weeks, and that works, yeah.
Perfect.
And that's within our window, correct? Or do we need a continuance from these folks?
Yes, I'll have them do another
Okay, alright, so we just have to ask you to sign the form and continue the, the timeframe here, but other than that, um...
I didn't, we wanna do it on the fifteenth, just to
Oh, they can't
We are, we're at six thirty, so it's gonna be a little, a little tight.
Yeah, I know. Except crazy enough days it is, it's a forty-five.
The good thing on the special permit is the court doesn't start to hearing opposes as far as the decision goes, so basically, we're just getting, um, approval for them to continue the hearing.
Okay. Okay.
Can I just ask you a quick question, Chris? So the purpose of the eighth is just to look at the draft decision, approve the draft decision, and verify that the plans have been updated as requested here?
Yep.
And that there's no other testimony to be taken on any issue outside of those narrow things?
That's pretty much, I mean, it's a full continuous, but yeah, we're not anticipating any other testimony or anything else, Dave. And then at that time, we'll be, you know, if, if the plan's updated to our satisfaction, and, and, and these order conditions are all finely tuned, we'll be able to vote and finalize this hearing that night, and the order conditions will be right with it?
Public comment has been closed, correct?
Um, it hasn't been, but
You can't if you keep the hearing open.
Yeah, so, you know? But at this point, I'm not too concerned about public opinion. Um, you know, it is what it is, they're gonna have their opinion to be here, I, I, I welcome that, but, I mean, you know, legally, I don't, I mean, we've got Jacob really hit a home run, I mean, he did all the homework, and he pulled down a lot of great information for us tonight that answered all those questions from last week's meeting.
Yeah, Chris, Chris, you're, you're within your rights to close off public discussion tonight. And it doesn't matter if you have a room full of people or not, people were allowed to come tonight, you, you can close off discussion if you'd like.
You know, I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable keeping it open, and, and I, and I don't see, I'm not worried about anything getting derailed here. I, I, you know, I'm not worried about that, Dave, but I appreciate that concern, but, you know? You know, let's keep it, uh, on the level here.
Good. I have to excuse myself, thank you for the word for
Thanks, Dave.
Can I ask a question? How do we get an address? Because that has been a huge question from the SBA, and they've been pushing us.
That's the man you wanna talk to right there. Tom Clark?
Tamika.
Okay, so Anita.
Thank you, Tamika.
Thank you.
And who, who, that's, um...
So Anita's out because she had surgery, so if you go in and take her, she's Monday through Thursday from eight to three.
Awesome.
I've been making up an address down there for
Worked pretty well. I think I was one twenty-four. Is there an address on your tax bill?
Oh, that's
Is there an address on the tax bill? It's lot six.
It's lot six, that's what everything says.
Precise residence.
Lot six. Lot thing, the addresses.
Yeah.
Lot six, um, you know, the book, two hundred and fifty B dash six.
Yeah.
This day, this, this place is like a stepchild of this damn country, like
Yeah, I know.
You would think, because how would you just call that?
Blowing in the wind out there, aimlessly.
One of the things you might wanna know is just gonna, um, I think, uh, O Kemp is doing it, they're, uh, their addresses now are the distance up the road from the fire department, so if you call in, you know, if your address is, uh, thirty, whatever street, uh, that's down by the, uh, boat ramp sack.
Crawford Road?
Yeah, thirty Crawford Road, you're thirty feet up the road, if you're three hundred and fifty, you're three hundred and fifty feet up the road.
Interesting.
Whatever, and they pick.
I didn't measure that out.
So, and I thought they were doing the addresses.
Alright, so at that point, I think it's time to, um, continue this, um, this hearing at this time. Do we have a motion? I have a second.
Second.
Jacob, second, thank you. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Rick, gotcha. A, that's unanimous, no nays. Um, the motion carries, this is continued till June eighth at six PM. And we will see you all then, and hopefully, the final documents and information, we can get this wrapped up.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Wonderful night. Um, and then old, new business, anything else, anybody got anything?
No, no.
No, right, nothing from last night, nothing from tonight. Um, just to let you guys know, we hired that guy, um, um, alright, um, Dave Mixon, yeah, and Matt Axon, whatever his name is. Yeah, that's a weird name.
Were you able to find out what his, um...
Um, so I, I did ask him that, um, and I'll let you question him, he, so, he, he really never, doesn't have any college degrees. That he, so he's not an RF, there's no such thing as an RF engineer stamp. Like that, like there's an electrical stamp, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
He goes, and like the gentleman that was online last night, we spoke with there, was it Don Hayes or something?
Don Hayes, yeah.
Don Hayes, he's the same thing, like, he's not an engineer.
He's got, well, he does have a degree in engineering, and, uh, I looked up his
But he's not an RF.
No.
There's no such thing.
No, but he's, I looked at, he's got a degree in whatever, and blah, blah, blah.
So this gentleman does not have a degree.
Okay.
Alright?
Yep.
So, just so you know, there's no such thing, but he goes, when I do have to have anything stamped electrically, which is very, very rarely, you know, we just hire an electrical engineer. That's mostly on the, uh, the wiring side, the type of work that I would do. But as far as these cell tone, cell phone guys and stars, they, they march their own beats, this industrial communications company, they did the tower down there, that six hundred footer. And they just, they design it all, they engineer it, they build it, it's all on them. And, um, there's really no, you know, and they got the whole liability thing from it, from an installation point of view, you know? Um, so, and just, and just a note too, a point of note, in our bylaws, there is, testing is required every year from the RF and the noise. So ninety days after the, the cell tower is installed, they have to test it and give us a report back on the RF and the noise of the generators, as well as every year.
Well, one of the things, and, you know, the RF is never gonna change because they don't, they can't measure it. Um, it's all done mathematically through calculations, so
Well, they said
As long as they don't turn the power
In the bylaw, they said you go out, to go out in the field and test it. Measure it.
But that's one of the questions I asked, he says the equipment, you, you can't test it, so lo, such a low dose of RF radiation that you can't
As I always said last night, but I don't think that's right, because I know a lot of town, city bylaws have that in there, on cell towers, that you gotta, you gotta give reports on that test. There must be a way to do it.
Well, you do it mathematically, you know, if they turn the juice up, it's gonna increase your
Is that like one of those nuclear testers that clicks?
Yeah, that's what I was asking, no, and, uh, it made sense what he said, but, uh, and that's what I was asking, so all they have to do is, you know, and that's why I asked him about where he gets his calculations. So he's, most engineers do this, they, you know, they open up a book, and they say, okay, this is what I need, where's my, here's my formula for that. I put in my variables, and it spits me out the number, and that's what he's doing. So he's just using already established formulas, which is fine, he's dumping in the mon, he's dumping in the numbers and spinning it out.
Yeah.
Which is, that's how engineers work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So
Maybe it's a question we're asking David Maxson, just to see if he has a different correspondence as far as how they test it and provide that report.
Yeah, he's gonna, he's, I mean, the guy's a wealth of information, and again, he's worked for so many municipalities, um...
Well, we'll find out, yeah, we'll ask him if he contradicts Don Hay, Don Hayes.
He, he actually knows Don well.
Yeah.
And, um, he was actually, I spoke with him today, he was actually contacted by, well, I forget the gentleman's name, one of the guys that was on, was representing Trini Souza, said, I heard your name mentioned last night, so, yeah, it's a tight knit web, these guys
I'm sure it's a very tight-knit community.
It is, it is, it's a good old boys' club there, it's, you know? How do you find any kinda peer type, you know?
Well, you know, it's funny, when they were talking, people were concerned about, you know, them lying about the, the, um, coverage maps. Well, they lie about the coverage maps to the public on how much better their coverage is. They don't, when they wanna increase it, they're not lying, 'cause they, you know, they're not, like, you, you mentioned it, Chris, one time. These guys aren't gonna spend, you know, whatever, three hundred thousand dollars for, for nothing, for re, you know, for no reason, so...
But anyways, just wanna let you know that that's in the process here, so, um, he's, um, looking at, just, just for a point of note, but, um, he said he can have the report done by, if not June eighth, that, end of that week, which is like the tenth or the eleventh, that Friday, Saturday. So that'll give us a few days to review the report and for the fifteenth meeting, and he will be at the meeting as well, in person, to put, you know, go
Bring his little slasher.
Yeah, bring his thing and spiel it out, so, I think we, uh, I think, you know, we'll see how this goes, and hopefully, we're, we're heading in the right direction now.
Okay, careful motion to adjourn.
Alright, any second?
Second.
Not a second, yeah, okay, uh, any discussion, I'm all in favor? Alright.